All this being ordered, all right, for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all. Can I get approval of the agenda, please?
Mr. Mayor. I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying, aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Um, there's nobody here for open forum. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak? Going once, going twice? All right, consent agenda, approval of the bills. Purchase orders, minutes, investments, a donation resolution. Um, by the, by the Melrose Lions of $500 towards the 2018 water tower lights. We would like to thank, um, thank them very much. Thank you to the Lions for doing that. We really appreciate all your support for our community. All right, um, let's see what time it is now. It is 6:02. We have a public hearing. Okay, I get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
I'm saying, aye. Opposed, motion is carried. It is still 6:02. We are calling a public hearing for, uh, VAC dash four dash 20, 20 eight dash 701, Ron's Oil, Propane Utility Easement Vacation.
Before you tonight is the requested vacation for the utility easement that go north south between the two parcels, lot three, or lot one of the acres. They're both owned by the same property owner and he would like to instruct us across the, um, property lines. I mean, the two lots into one lot, or two building the building, and he would like to request vacation and the easement to allow him to do so. It should be noted that the south tent sheet of the easement will not be vacated because that'll be needed to maintain the tent foot easement across the south property line.
Yep. Are there any questions?
The only thing adjacent there is the trail backside of that property. It's affecting anybody in the neighborhood.
We just sent notice to the state regarding the trail and they had no issue with vacation.
All right. Is there anybody, um, out there that has any questions about this? Because it is, uh, it's open to the, to the public. All right, we will be making a decision on that just shortly. So it is 6:04. We will close this public hearing then and advance to our agenda. Okay, we're on to reports. Uh, Chief Mouse for the Police Department, monthly report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, our April 2020 numbers for our traffic area, we had 14 citations, 22 verbal warnings, three written warnings. Uh, for them, for April in 2020, we had 227 calls or requests for service and last year was 384. We ended on ICR 1122 this year and last year we were at 1535. So we have had another, um, decrease in activity for the month or for the year. Uh, we had 26 agency assists. Those numbers seem to be still staying pretty consistent and, um, throughout this time. Um, some areas that, uh, wanted to make you aware of, we did do ordinance violations for, um, will show up in the mayor report, but, uh, we were at 70 violations for this year and last year we were at 44. So we were having a decline in the last couple of years, but we, uh, had another spike this year. Uh, the area I've seen most of is vehicles with expired cabs and some that could be related to, um, DMVs not being open at this time or slowly opening back up. So hopefully those all change. We did send out letters instead of face-to-face contact and explanations on things. Um, so we've gotten a few calls with, um, some concerns or questions on what they're receiving, but we were able to answer those no problem. So hopefully this all gets ironed out and, uh, we don't have many to present to you at the June meeting for any abatement or, or future, uh, issues or correlated things. Um, another area graduation for the 2020 senior class is going to be happening next Friday the 7th, or excuse me, at 7:00. There's going to be a parade going through town. Uh, Carol's going to be putting that through, uh, through the newspaper for the route as well as the school has sent that out to the senior class. So hopefully the cities, citizens will have good attendance along the route so we can recognize their senior classes here. Other than that, I don't have much to add unless somebody has questions.
We're, we're good to go. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Um, city attorney report, Mr. Scott.
Short report, uh, there's a note there about home family development, but, uh, the phone cannon, uh, variances that are coming up, so I won't spend any more time on that and, uh, that's coming up revolving loan fund. Uh, you're familiar with that project as it was getting off the ground. You did some questions in the past. That's all I got.
That's good.
Thank you, Scott.
General on first quarter financial, Tessa.
Yes, good evening. Okay, the general fund revenues are pretty low in the first quarter, which we tend to expect. Um, the property taxes and local government aid is received in July and December. I did reach out to Sterns County a couple of weeks ago to find out what they were anticipating for our property tax collection. This was about the first week in May and at that point they had received about 31% of our first half, which is on par with where it typically is. So some of our payments will be delayed from collecting all of the first half by June to some of that now trickling into July. But, um, at this point it was hard to tell if there was going to be a decrease from prior years with that. Um, otherwise for the general fund expenditures are also pretty low. Some of our, um, administrative services are not towards the end of the year. A big portion of our budget is transferring funds relating to capital needs to our capital projects fund. Those are done in June and December, so that will show a truer picture at that point of the budget. Um, and the contract for the fire payment is also made in September. For our MATA fund, activity at this point is pretty low. There hasn't been much for expenses during the first quarter. More of that I'm anticipating to come, um, in the second and third quarters. Ambulance was right on track. The revenue was 27% and expenditures were 26% of budget, so everything was looking really good with that. The transfer to the general fund from the ambulance is done at year end, so those expenses were low in comparison. However, their maintenance expenses were higher due to some, um, air intakes that were needed at the ambulance home. For the fire department, revenue was at 21%. A large portion, however, of their revenue comes from the fire contract charges and those are received at year end. The department received a large amount of donations earlier this year, which was an increase in the revenues than what we usually see this early. However, with those donations and there's also the expense of the Argos, so it was an in and out of that fund, um, resulting in the higher expenses at this point. Also relating to that, there were some high vehicle expenses with repairs and maintenance that were needed. Um, for our capital projects fund, as with the past, we don't have a lot of expenses in first quarter. A lot of it has been engineering work for the 2020 street project. Most of the expenses relating to those though won't happen in our second and third quarters. But one expense that we did see so far is the streets department split the purchase of a new water truck with the water department. And then for our debt fund, almost all of the expenses have been made for the year. We have one more interest payment towards the end of the year, or the summer. Um, and then the revenue for those debt service funds will be coming in with our tax payments later in the year. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I do not.
Okay, that's all I have otherwise.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. And we're on to community development director report.
We've had 30 permits already issued in 2020, more since the date of this, uh, May 15th report. Um, 17 permits for, first quarter we've already had 13, uh, for second quarter. Uh, combination mostly residential, uh, either commercial, mostly general permits, one new hope. Um, planning commission had a variance that they considered for, um, Ron's Oil and Propane. They recommended approval of two of the two variances. Um, and then the Samhain and variants, uh, they recommended approval of two of the six variances and the RV surface parking, uh, they recommended approval. Meta has approved three loans, three emergency loans for businesses that had a G15 impact and the tax forfeiture land by the interstate most purchased for sale again. Matter reevaluation and is not recommending that we consider purchasing at this time, so we're not having to your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. City administrator report, Claire.
So as you have seen if you walked in, the plexiglass is up at the city center. There's one more thing that has to happen before we can open in the morning. Um, our plan is hopefully to get open tomorrow, um, to the general public and we've had all the precautions in place. We had to have everyone sign a COVID-19 preparedness plan. Um, we've gotten some of those from the employees, but not all of them. We, um, and we can talk about this now or we can talk about it under 8A where we're going to be talking about the executive order. I want to have a conversation regarding the latest governor's order when it comes to bars and restaurants in particular and liquor licenses, so we can address that, Mr. Mayor, under, uh, under old business 8A. The legislative session ended on June 12th, or I'm sorry, the legislative session ended on May 18th with no bonding bill. They are coming back into a special legislative session on June 12th where they hope to settle a bonding bill. We shall see. Um, we don't know where we stand with our wastewater projects. We have no idea at this point. So we're hoping that, um, I talked to Senator Westrom tonight actually about the, the bars and restaurants and I also talked to him about the bonding bill a little bit. We had a good conversation about that and he is hopeful, um, that they re, they are going to agree on a bonding bill this year and that they're going to settle somewhere in that 1.3 billion range for a bonding bill. And he really is hopeful that, um, Melrose will be on that, so we'll see. Um, that's what I have as far as the legislative session goes. The other thing I did want to mention, uh, the, the street department earlier this year had received authorization to purchase a plow truck. The plow truck has been ordered, but it's actually not going to be available till 21 or 22. There is in the capital fund budget for the street department that's already been approved for 21, a greater, which is, uh, quite a bit less than what the plow truck is. So what we're asking, um, it to be able to do is to take and purchase that greater this year, so we're flipping them. So the greater would be this year, the plow truck next year. So we're just taking those capital purchases and, um, flipping them. So again, greater this year, plow truck next year.
Gary, can you clarify greater or is that?
Loader, sorry.
Okay, front end loader.
Sorry.
Okay, I just, I'm thinking we don't have a greater, so I didn't know how we.
I, I apologize. I said it wrong. Loader.
You approved 200,000 for a poll. They went, uh, research, we did, we went to four vendors for the body and stuff. Uh, there's two vendors that we thought were, we do a good job and stuff. And the one vendor is 25,000 dollars spent to do. Uh, they're all the next year's whole master. They did our last one, it's called a lot of quality and state, but they're backed up until February of 22.
Okay.
So, uh, then our truck chassis with COVID, they got backed up till over, uh, this year. We never heard of anything. We thought that we got out of this with the tollmaster, not committed, but for 2022 of February. They're feeling we could maybe get a little bit sooner. So in order to pay that 25,000 dollars just on the body, you know, we went with that then versus another one. I think they were like 89,000 for the body and the other one was like 115,000.
So you're going to replace that case loader?
No, this is the pole truck.
No, no, I mean.
Another loader? No, we would, we would go with another loader.
Another loader?
Like the one that I have.
Okay.
That's the best one.
What we have?
No, we were, we were trading at 2,000.
2,000 for a loader?
No, we have a case.
Case, okay, that's what I got. Case was the only.
Yeah, we did have thousands, like a bit up to over 5,000 hours and started to have some issues with it. And, uh, a little bit bigger one would be nicer for like, we started probably four, five years ago, leaning our, we pretty much love our snowmobile. We hang, uh, you know, we hang that roller on there and like, uh, from pushing and stuff, it's a lot nicer. We have, we, we got the toolkit, that's going to help us a lot in the parks. We always wanted smaller rollers for parks, you know, and that works, so we want a lot of that, so yeah, we're going to be able to do a lot of that now where it's fast, so, uh.
I think that's fine. We're just flipping.
Yeah.
Flipping a year for the truck and, uh, loader.
We have to get on the list to get that truck by, and that's okay.
I'm fine with it. All good?
All good.
I'm, I'm good.
So, Mr. Mayor, the rest of my stuff will take place under, um, 8A. So, you want to go ahead?
Sounds good. We're on to action items. Uh, Dr. dash 3 dash 2020 dash 101, Hen Tom variance request, resolution number 2020 dash 26, resolution approving the case application for a variance for a minimum lot within minimum lot area per dwelling unit in a R3 multi-family residential zoning district.
All right, um, so before you tonight is a request to reduce the, to lower the minimum lot size to 90 feet instead of, uh, excuse me, the minimum lot size of, uh, 1,608.75 square feet per dwelling unit instead of the required 3,000 square feet and the minimum lot, uh, interior lot frontage of 90 feet instead of 100 feet. The planning commission held a variance regarding this and four other, um, elements. Those were elements they did not recommend approval of and as such, the applicants came back with a different plan that allowed them to proceed with just the two variances that were recommended for approval by the planning commission. Um, and so that is what is before you tonight. Um, the property is already guided and zoned for multifamily. Um, the lot set is 10, the lot is 10 feet less than the minimum width because of how they kind of configured it. Basically, there were two lots that had apartments and they kind of redrew the lot lines to allow them to put in, um, an apartment or a shed at some point back. And so that's kind of why this, this is now less than 10 feet. So 10 feet less than the minimum width. So the planning commission did recommend approval. Are there any questions?
All right, can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
First and second. Okay, first and second, I'm saying, aye. Opposed, motion is carried. Uh, variance four dash 2020 dash 102, Ron Oil, Propane variance, resolution number 2020 27, resolution approving case number, uh, application for a variance from the minimum rear setback and maximum lot coverage requirements in an I-2 light industrial zoning district.
Ron Oil and Propane has requested a 10-foot rear self-setback instead of the 25 feet that would otherwise be required. And they currently exceed the maximum of the 70% max, maximum lot coverage, um, which includes the building and the paving, um, or, or gravel in this case. Um, and they're currently at, um, just under 89% or even 89 and a half-ish percent. And so they're requesting to go up to 89.89% and increase of 0.34%, so a fairly minor increase. The reason that they're requesting variance for both of these items is because there's an existing, um, fuel area that's kind of in the middle of their large lot and it really limits how they can, um, place the building so that it has to kind of go a little bit more towards the grass than they might have otherwise had it. Um, and the, the fuel area was put up by a previous owner, obviously not anticipating the need for, um, alert storage building. The building is proposed to be 17,900 square feet approximately. Are there any questions?
No. It's pretty exciting. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay, first and a second. I'm saying, aye. Opposed, motion carried. Uh, VAC four dash 2020 dash 701, Ron's Oil, Propane Utility Ease, Easement Vacation, resolution number 2020 dash 28, a resolution vacating a general utility easement upon petition by the landlords.
The public hearing was just held on this, on your site and as I mentioned, is just vacating the seven and a half utility, put utility easement on either side between the shared nonmine focusing put utility easement, um, but not vacating the south tent sheet of it.
All right, council to provide, to provide consideration to amend or adopt this resolution. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second. Second. I'm saying, aye. Opposed, motion is carried. All right, then we're on to ordinance number, uh, well, uh, 521, 2020, an ordinance amending section 500 Parking, Loading, Storage Regulation of zoning ordinance number 1989 dash 1 dash A as amended, adopted by reference as, uh, chapter 153 of the Melrose City Court.
The city's received a request for people to be able to park RVs on crushed granite and, um, this is the way that we're able to allow that for just RVs, not for general parking or driveway purposes. General driveways would still need to be on a durable surface, which is asphalt, concrete or paper. Um, crushed granite would only be allowed for the parking RVs with the modification of this order.
Is, just a real quick question. Does that mean like even in people's backyards, you know, if people are filling up their backyards, there's supposed to be some type of a, you know, asphalt or, or something? Is that correct?
Um, it's, there's some provisions. There shall be no more than one major recreational vehicle per dwelling unit parked in the front yard, however, no more than two per residential dwelling unit shall be allowed. So yes, it would allow, um, backyard or front yard to be crushed granite or underneath your yard and, uh, those, that's one RV parking stipulation.
Okay. Do they have to have some type of a surface to park vehicles on in a, in a regular yard like cars or trucks?
Um, Craig's probably the expert on that.
Are you still there yet, Craig?
Did you hear the question, Craig?
I am. From what, uh, what I recall, the ordinance without having it in front of me is if they are in the front yard, they need to be on a, um, asphalt, concrete or paver surface. If they're beyond the face of the front yard, so the side yard or backyard, they do not need that from my understanding of the ordinance. I'd have to look at it to give you a better answer, but.
Nope, that's fine. All right, thanks, Craig. All right, so that's, um, we're looking for a motion to approve this.
So move.
All right, there's a first, there's a second. Um, is there anything else? All right.
Is there somebody that contest with this or?
Uh, it was, um, requested by a property owner. It was like, I believe, um, yeah, I'm specific required.
Because they had more than one on their property or because they didn't have a park done?
Because they just wanted to get it off of just parking it in general on their property and they wanted it on crushed rock.
Yeah, so it looks a lot better. Crushed rock's actually better than dragging the mud or the.
Yeah, crushed granite.
Yeah, crushed granite. Okay, well, that's good. So there was a motion made by Tony and seconded by Justin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. All right, we're on the 70 League of Minnesota City Insurance Quote. Is Tessa going to take this one?
Yep. Can't hear you.
Sorry, I was muted. Um, okay, we received our quote for the property and liability insurance through the League of Minnesota Cities. Our period goes from May 15th through, um, May 15th, 2021. We are still covered typically by the time they get their renewal to us and then it's contemplated there's a little lag. But the quote for the following year is 90,049. That is an increase from last year where it was 81,408. Um, and the biggest reason for that increase is, um, added equipment and we really reviewed it and added some coverage for not only the sheds, but the, um, contents of the facilities. So the insurance premium is shared between the general funds and utility funds with the general funds covering 39% of the premium. So the city has a $5,000 deductible and a $15,000 aggregate similar as prior years. And in the past, we typically choose that option two, uh, waiving the statutory tort limit and then not purchasing the excess liability coverage. The commission did approve this quote at their May 11th meeting, so we're just looking for the council to concur with the public utility commission on our upcoming, um, insurance
If there's no questions, can I get a motion to approve, please, to concur with the public utilities commission?
So move.
Second.
I'm saying, aye. Opposed, motion is carried. Um, part-time seasonal temporary street park worker.
So there were three interviews done for a part-time position. They received three applications and they interviewed three different, um, people for the position on May 18th. And the recommendation at this point is that they hire Sam Rieland, I believe. Gary, is that correct? Okay. So that would be a part-time, just kind of mow in the lawn type of a position. Uh, all three candidates are good and this was what they came up with, so that's what the recommendation is moving forward. And starting at that very temporary pay scale, which the beginning wage is $11.46, I believe.
Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So move.
Okay, can I, second?
Second.
I'm saying, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, potential land, Sam.
Is that yours, Lisa?
So the first name is a request for, um, land that's upholding the trail, um, just north of, um, the offices and requested to basically allow that to purchase. A similar request in the past who have done for like a dollar, um, to get it back from the actual mouth of the city, um, ownership. So that was, uh, typically.
Yep, that's what we did for the last two for sure, so yeah. All right, any questions? All right, can I get a motion to approve, please?
So move.
Can I get a second? I'm saying, aye. Opposed, motion is carried. All right. Okay, old business, resolution number 2020 dash 21, resolution declaring a local emergency.
So if you ever recall, this was a resolution that the council passed, um, on March 19th and it was regarding declaring a local emergency due to the, uh, actions of the state government related to COVID. The emergency gives basically, uh, the mayor the authority, um, to make decisions on behalf of the council and to authorize the chief of police and the city administrator to follow out on what those decisions are. Up until this point, the majority of our decisions have, that have been made have really been based on what the governor's executive orders have been. Um, and one of the things that just happened, uh, this week is our administrative staff came back to city center. We, under the governor's executive orders on May 15th, we are allowed to open city center back up. We haven't been able to do that because we didn't have the rest of our preparedness plan in place. We're very close. We just have one thing with our air handlers that has to be addressed and then tomorrow morning with any luck, we'll remove the barricades and open city center. We do have the plexiglass up that's protecting our employees. We do have all the PPE in place and we have signs at the front and we're going to post signs on the front door that basically say, you know, if you have any of these symptoms, we ask that you not come into city center, that type of thing. So we are doing what we can to make sure that we're serving the public as well as protecting the staff here. All of the employees are given a copy of that plan, um, basically telling them, here's the plan, here's what we have in place. If you have any questions, let us know. So that's what we're doing from a city center perspective. In addition to that, we have the emergency revolving loan fund that we have put in place for businesses. The chamber and the city have partnered on many, many communications related to all of this. And so that's ongoing really well. Then we get to yesterday and the governor has decided that, uh, bars and restaurants can open, but only for outdoor seating. So that really did cause quite a ripple, um, not only among, for our community, but for many, many other communities. So it led to a, a discussion, um, among my peers, among many others, you know, what can a city do if in fact this type of an order goes in place? If you'll recall, we did write a letter to the governor. I believe I shared that, I know I shared it with all of you regarding. that. I know I shared it with all of you regarding, we strongly urge you to let us work with our local business community to open them back up. So I received guidance right before this meeting that talks from both the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities and the League of Minnesota Cities regarding, um, what we can and can't do legally as a city. So Chris Hood is with Flattery, Flattery and Hood and is with the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities just basically said, obviously cities are expressing great frustration with the executive orders. And so CMGC and the league has provided, um, memos on how cities are able to handle this and encourage the state to allow businesses to reopen. Um, I think the whole restaurant community and bar community has really taken aback. I talked to Sandra Westrom tonight right before I got in here as well, and I talked to Representative Anderson about this. I know that they are working legislatively to try and get this opened back up. Um, I know that, um, there's many folks in the restaurant industry in particular that are working on trying to lobby to get things opened back up. But basically, the cities have no authority to change a state law or be less restrictive than state law unless the law specifically allows for it, for it, nor do the cities have any recourse for the, to the federal constitution to resist the state's laws as cities are not our subdivisions of the state. There may be civil or criminal legal consequences to a ci- a city for not enforcing the governor's order. And failing to enforce does not protect the local businesses from enforcement as the state can and has enforced the order itself already upon some businesses. As we all know, um, in Albany, there was a, a bar that was gonna be opening up and the attorney, um, the attorney general kind of went after that particular business owner and said they'll enforce it, um, the orders needed. Um, and they also raised the same issue in Breckenridge, the city of Breckenridge. In regards to questions of consti- constitutionality of the orders, we have heard, and this is Chris's words, we have heard some of the pressure for cities to challenge the constitutionality of the orders, um, by filing a case in federal court by an alliance, um, you know, or other orders has been, has been stoked by the filing of a case in federal court by an alliance of small business owners, churches. It is important to remember, unlike citizens, cities do not have the ability to challenge the constitutionality of state laws. And then he cites a couple references in here. He says, while it is understandable that the council wants to express this disapproval of the most recent order, it is legally risky because it takes actions outside of the legal authority of the city and can be seen as inciting others to break the law. If the council wants to express a public statement on the subject, then perhaps an alternative pro- approaches to, you know, have a resolution or strongly worded language that can be sent to the governor. Now, if you'll recall, we have already done that through a letter that we sent to the governor over, over ten, um, I believe it was a week to ten days ago. In addition to this information, there's also other information that I gave you from the League of Minnesota Cities that answers all those other questions. So I just wanted to kind of lay that framework out there as you make a decision as to whether or not you want to keep the order. I'm, and Scott will weigh in on this too, but I'm strongly recommending that we keep our order because if they give us the ability to make decisions at a local level, I want to make sure that we have that in place so that we can do that. So, and again, Scott can answer any questions that you may have, but this is, this is what we have from a legal standpoint. And then I also want to talk about the bars and restaurants. So one of the things is the bars and the restaurants have been told.
As we're going on this though, with this, everything they stated in there says law, nowhere near, this is an order. So Scott, maybe you could, what's, what's the difference here? I mean, we're talking, a law is something I understand, we cannot break the law.
This is a law.
This is, is, is this order a recommendation or is this?
You know, the, and I went back and looked at the underlying statutes. I think it goes back to the coal war. Uh, and a whole nuclear power plant and we get flooding and other natural disasters in the state. And so legislature prepared, adopted, where in certain circumstances, the governor can declare an emergency and can issue orders, uh, to address the emergency. And those orders have the effect of law.
I know, but they, they just, they don't make, a lot of, I get those, I mean, the ones I've been reading here.
Yeah, the legislate, the legislature said, okay, in these circumstances, we're gonna set aside the usual process and let the governor do this. And the check on that is that the legislature preserves the right to, you know, vote to, you know, void one of these laws or say, no, there's not a state of emergency, void that declaration. The legislature before they adjourn.
And take it out.
Do that. Yeah. Next time around, another feature of the law is that when the legislature is not in session, the governor declares an emergency, he has to call it back in session. So this latest order will expire into, and at that point, if he decides he wants, believes there's still a state of emergency and he wants to, uh, extend it, the legislature comes back. And that's, I think they're already planning a special session for like the fourteenth or fifteenth.
Well.
Then the legislature has to vote him to.
Legislature, if they felt that there was abuse.
So if one denies it, is it done?
No, you gotta have both of them.
To approve it. You need both to approve it or prove, both to deny it?
Both to deny it.
So if one approves it, it goes in?
Well, I think.
So if the house goes with it and the senate says no, it still goes into effect?
So you could be dealing with this for a long time with all the challenging the authorities.
But that wasn't the government.
I'm just, I mean, I, I just feel like we're backing down because of all this and, and there's, there's been wars over this. I mean, they, what can they fought for their right years and years ago?
What can we do to help these business owners? I know the cornerstone's got a unique situation, but all the others have area behind parking area. The bowling alley's got parking.
Right.
Can we allow them to fence that as much property as they have?
I, I would say as a right now, if they want to serve drinks in a parking lot, I am totally .
I'm guessing that, that's, you know.
You can legally do.
They, they, they all have parking or they all have area behind. I'm not real familiar with how much the damn, it's over there, the damn bar. But, you know, go out within three feet of the street and fence the hall works. And they'll have to do their best they can to police it. Of course, we don't want drinks being handed over to the fence before it hits your hole.
And that's one of the things I was going to, I just talked to Clay earlier this morning. Wesley was looking at the liquor licensing. Now, cornerstone doesn't have a liquor license. So then if they decide we don't have a patio, never had patio, I mean, they'd want to.
But they do have a big, uh, onion going around their entire building. So they could serve people outside of that.
That's another part for, for the folks with the liquor licenses. And I think really, bowling alley and.
There's five of them.
JD.
So is there something that we could just throw right up to them?
Have it, and have it outdoor.
Right.
And so the question that is, if they chose to expand, they could do that.
Yeah, you know, which normally maybe just used for parking. I'm just taking the bowling alley, for example, on the south side of his building, he has ample parking area that has long been fenced in. In fact, we had a dance out there once a couple of years ago, fire department dance that they co-sponsored. I think it was during the festival.
Yes.
You know, so it's a, he's got a big area to fence in. At least he can do some business.
From the city's standpoint, when you, when you issue the liquor license, it's for a press. You have to describe the premise in the license. So if you're gonna be outside, you've got to include that area of the license. So if they want to expand, you know, where the city would come in would be, you know, in their license.
We can make, could we just make a resolution? I mean, is this a, how much of a formal petition is this?
Well, my understanding is, is that they would have to come in with their new expanded area. The council puts it, and then it has to go to the, you know.
So we, what we did is, if I may, uh, we also, guidance for cities on expanding outdoor services for bars and restaurants, because this has come up obviously, to kind of step back and kind of to, um, go along with what Scott is saying. So we have already sent, um, the guidance out to our bars and our restaurants. We have a meeting scheduled with them tomorrow from two to four P M., a go-to meeting. We have invited all of the people that serve food and, um, liquor. We wanted to come here tonight to make sure that we had the blessing of the council to be able to work with them in any capacity that we could to expand their outdoor seating. You know, the most they can have is fifty people even in the outdoor seating area, but we want to work with them. Unf- you know, this is what we, this is a hard result. And so we just want to do the best that we can. Um, I don't think there's a single person in this room or anyplace else. I think a lot of people are very much caught by surprise by what happened yesterday. I think they were thinking that he was gonna allow, you know, fifty, you know, fifty percent occupancy, whatever. But be that as it may, this is what we're dealing with. So the best way we can help our business community is to say, we will work with you to do whatever you need to do for your outdoor seating. Now, as far as the liquor license goes, Scott is absolutely right in that we need to, if it's an expanded service area, we need to know what that is. But you as a council, let's say they all turn those plans into us and then their insurance company would have to ensure that the rest of that as well. But when they turn that in, we could host a special meeting next week and by resolution, the council could approve these expanded areas for them to be able to sell liquor.
Can we, is it, it gotta be working days? Could we have that meeting on Monday or that's not enough?
Well, Monday's, uh, Monday's Memorial Day.
Oh, Tuesday?
Tuesday. I would say we could do it Tuesday. We have a meeting with the bars tomorrow.
Well, we talked to them tomorrow because we pretty much know what they're gonna ask for.
Yep.
Might as well just take their old property and just.
Yeah, I, I, if it's legally, if we can, you know, if it's not time, I think we should get together on Tuesday.
Yep.
Well, this is, this is not gonna take any.
So, you know, just again, they're gonna have to make the business decision because
the same rules apply. They gotta have.
Yep. The liquor liability insurance, yep.
But they already.
Not gonna happen.
I don't know if their stuff is gonna, I don't know if their liquor liability insurance, you think it's gonna change that much?
I don't know.
He would, he would say.
They'll have, you know, I imagine after, you know, darkness hours, they're gonna have to have some lighting, you know, to ensure that patrons aren't tripping and falling down from something other than what they're consuming.
And the other thing is, is like, if they took any of them, I mean, if they wanna, if they want tent over the top, is that not considered a patio then?
They're able to, if they're.
If they want.
With, uh, covering over it, they can't just have like in a garage where there's a door open.
Right.
They have to be used for patio lights, um, but they are able to have cover.
I'm just saying if they want to go in temporarily for a month, they want to put these big tents like they do down at the park.
Yeah. So my quick question is, I know it's sort of off the track of this, but it should be on the track. You know, they're gonna need all the seating and stuff. It's gonna be temporary. Can we borrow them our picnic tables? Cause we're not gonna have camping.
No, actually we do have camping. Camping's allowed as of June first.
Okay. But is it an idea where we can loan out our, we can?
I, I mean, we looked at that today. I, I agree with you. But the other thing that we could do is we could, if we wanted some of the revolving loan fund dollars that we have, if we wanted to consider modifying that to be more of a grant for outdoor seating for these businesses, we could potentially do that.
I think we, if they're gonna need that, they've got tables and chairs in there. I'm not sure they can.
Yeah, I'm thinking the same thing.
Yeah, I just was just trying to think outside.
All they need is some, uh, you know, boards and.
Yeah.
Little.
Thought green.
Boards for somebody to lean against and have a drink. I mean, that's, I ultimately that's what they're, what they do. It's probably an outdoor party.
I, I think we, I personally think that we do whatever we have to do.
Yep.
Make the legal requirements for a meeting next Tuesday. At that point in time, anybody that's, that's in that situation that wants to approach us and ask for the, the variance to, for their entire premise, we can address it at that time and make sure.
Okay, one question.
Scott, go ahead.
Do you think, do you think Tuesday's too early?
It all depends on when these businesses get back to it.
No, Tuesday.
Okay.
But Gary?
And the street.
They've got a, they've got a little space back.
See, that's what they do.
Yeah, they got plenty, and, and also there's parking right over there.
They have to be contiguous is the only thing.
Yeah.
They have to be contiguous to their, they have to be able to be right next to their ground.
Yeah, I, like I said, they know what they own. Let them decide what they want to do. If they want to ask for more, then it's gonna take longer for them. Right. I mean, they got a top patio or back.
At least let them be able to get potentially up to fifty people.
Yes, I mean, there's gotta be a license for outside area, so give maybe, so give.
So they really.
The bowling alley.
And the damn, yeah, the damn bar too. They have the, you know.
Yes, the damn bar, bowling alley, and JD's are all licensed, but it's not a large licensed area. So they just have to refine that.
Okay.
As quick, as soon as we can do it.
Okay, Patty, will you schedule a special meeting Tuesday, six?
Well, six is our part board meeting.
Five thirty.
Five thirty?
Five thirty. Alright.
Um.
Scott, with the picnic table thing, you're shaking your head. Reason with that? I mean, if.
You don't get to use city property.
I get it, but if we're trying to help these business, I'm just saying not for the bar reasons. I don't know if we really want our picnic tables out there by the bars, but like cornerstone, we could slide a couple underneath their canopies for the time being. I mean, we're not gonna borrow them every single one, but. Hotel or whatever.
Very clean. Yeah, well, we'll wait and see what they say. You're right. They've probably already kind of figured this out hopefully. Um, again, there might be enough pressure that this will change again in a week. It's hard to say because literally this affects the whole state. And so I believe that the Restaurant Association and the, some of the bigger lobbyists are kind of leaning pretty hard in the state right now regarding this.
Um, so they have to take their good order. And who, who gives him, okay, when, when there's enough evidence to say, this doesn't really qualify as a healthy, I mean, there's plenty of evidence out there in Minnesota, it's also health. City people keep getting a spot failure rate three point four percent, which is just plain false. Uh, there's, I've got an article here, it's, it's announced the twelve global coronavirus studies. Nine of twelve, COVID-19 hospital rates somewhere between. When does the, when, when does this narrative of this makes a death date and not actually a, uh, a public health emergency, when does that get brought to light? And when does the state, they're challenging the governor on this? Uh, I think that needs to be communicated to the legislature, uh, whatever the council and Senate, and tell them to think, well, I'm gonna harder the next time to, uh, to write something in law so that this executive order does not just get blindly given to the governor, whoever the governor is. Because it's a dangerous situation. Um, I think you can create, there's gonna be a lot of harm done by this executive order. The other thing is, they should work something in there to give local governments more power in this situation. You can't just blanket a, you can't actually, every, different situation.
I would say after reading the, the statute, really something this former.